Security for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and justice for all.
Thank you. As President of the Board of Alderman, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the Agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. Join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID number is 840-1862-9071. The passcode is 036534. The public may also view the meeting via Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall and the Nashville Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Would the clerk please call roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings, and I am alone.
Alderman Clea.
I am here. I can hear the proceedings, and I am alone.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I can hear everyone, and I'm alone in this room.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'm present. I can hear everyone, and I am alone.
Alderman Karen.
I am here. I can hear everyone, and I am alone.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here. I can hear everyone, and I'm by myself.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm present. I can hear and see everyone, and I am alone.
Alderman Tenza.
I'm present. I can hear everyone, and I'm alone.
Alderwoman Lou.
Alderwoman Lou won't be joining us this evening.
Alderman Jerry.
I'm here alone, and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am present. I am alone in the room, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Laws.
I'm here. I can hear everyone, and I am alone.
Alderman Cleaver.
I'm present. I can hear everyone, and I am alone.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I'm present. I can hear everyone, and I am alone.
Alderman Willshire.
I am here. I am alone, and I can hear everyone.
You have 14 in attendance.
Thank you. Also in attendance this evening is Mayor Jim Donchess and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, do you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President, thank you very much. I had a number of things that I wanted to mention to you or talk with you tonight about. First, the tragic and horrible events that occurred in Washington DC where the Capitol was stormed by a group of insurgents. The, it's a very tragic thing for our nation. The first time that's happened in many, you know, a couple of centuries. And I think we should all lament the, that very unfortunate event. But we've been asked, and I know other members of city government, members of the Board of Aldermen have been asked about our local situation. We have reduced or lowered the flag to half-staff to commemorate the death of the officer who was killed during the attack. Sick, Officer Sicknick is his name, a young man who was killed, one of the Capitol Police officers. So our flag is at half-staff. And we've also been asked, Madam President, about what security measures are being taken. Now, I've talked with our Police Department, Chief Carrigan specifically. The Police Department is working in conjunction with the FBI, with the state police, to monitor all social network traffic and to assess any risks that may arise here in Nashville or in New Hampshire. So all of our law enforcement agencies are working together. And Chief Carrigan, Carrigan reports to me that they are on top of the situation. They're going to be very active and vigilant during the next eight days between now and the inauguration. And therefore, I think we can have confidence that they will do the best they can and be on top of the situation locally in terms of any security threat that may exist. Next, Madam President, I wanted to turn to the pandemic. You're going to get a report from Public Health and Community Services Director Bobby Bagley, as well as Angela Constantino, epidemiologist, a little later in the meeting. But briefly, the cases have been on the rise. December was the worst month here and in most places in the country. As the medical experts told us, the number of cases would rise during the winter. We have seen a rising positivity rate. At our local clinic last Tuesday, a week ago today, they actually saw a 20% positivity rate. In other words, 20% of the people tested at that clinic were positive. Although overall, the test during the week, the positivity rate was 13%. Still not good, but not, not as high as 20. Those were all of the tests done in Nashville. So we need to be vigilant. We need to continue to wear masks. We need to continue to social distance. We are working, following the advice of the medical experts. We know that the masks and will help us eradicate and eventually eliminate the pandemic. The vaccines are coming more slowly than we wished. So far, many of our first responders, part of group, so-called Group 1A, have been vaccinated for the first time and are signing up for their second doses. And after that, the state, state's in control of all this, will move to Group 1B, which includes many nursing home residents and, and others. Also in Group 1A, those being vaccinated now are the frontline healthcare workers. So many of the people at our hospitals have been vaccinated at least for the first time. But Madam President, I wanted to report to you some very sad news. We had a very long-term employee at Public Works whose name was Andre Pelletier, had worked for Public Works for 46 years. Now, he contracted COVID-19, not at work, but through a family or social contact. He suffered a very serious case of COVID-19. And today, I'm sad to report Andre Pelletier died as a result of COVID-19. So I know we all feel very badly for his family, a tragic loss. A, a family man, someone who's lived in Nashville, worked for the city for all this time, is struck down now by COVID-19 near the end of his career. So we're very sorry about that. And anything that we can do to help the family, I'm sure we will all be willing to assist in any way we can. But we will miss, and Public Works will miss, Mr. Pelletier. Next, Madam President, it's the beginning of the year. I wanted to at least briefly mention the budget. This will be a difficult budget year. We've been hit by the state of New Hampshire with two big, two big things. Number one, they've indicated that they're cutting school aid by about $7 million from what we received last year. A $7 million loss, a $7 million cut during the pandemic at the worst possible time is nothing that we can agree to. So we're trying to work with our legislative delegation to turn that around if possible. In addition to that $7 million hit, the state is hitting us with a $4.4 million increase in our pension bill, unrelated to any wage increases. So at the worst possible time, the state is hitting us with over $11 million. This translates into a 5% tax increase before we even get to the city budget. We will need to have a very tight budget. Madam President, in, for over the past several years, I have proposed the budget at the first meeting in May. Because we are trying to work with our legislative delegation to reverse some of these cuts, some of this $11 million hit, I will not be proposing the budget as early as that, probably in early May, when we'll have a better sense of what, how final this, these hits from the state of New Hampshire will be. But we will, of course, have time to talk more about the budget as time goes on. I did want to point out something that, and I think you're going to see something on your screen right now, but over the last two years, we have tried to work hard through the Assessing Department and through Administrative Services to make the Nashville Assessing Department the most transparent, the most accountable, the most accessible to the public. And much of that work has been by putting things online that citizens can access directly without going to the Assessing Office. All they got to do is go to the city website. So we surveyed other cities and towns around southern New Hampshire. And you can see that at this point, Nashville has 19, and there's 19 different things here that are available to the public online, running from abatement appeals down through the list to timber and excavation tax information. And when you survey other cities and towns, Manchester, Concord, Hudson, Salem, and on, you see that none of them come even close to having online what Nashville currently has online. I think the most that we have is eight of the 19 things. Some other town has, Manchester has six of the 19 available to the public. Now, our work is not done. We are still improving the accessibility, the accountability. One thing that still needs to be put online, and we're working on that right now, is to put on the, the 2020 property cards. There's some technical issues that Assessing has encountered, that IT has encountered with that. But we're confident that those can be overcome in the near future, and we will then have the 2020 property cards. But I think, again, our work is not done. We will continue to try to improve service. But as you look at this chart, I can, I think it gives you a visual impression of how, how much progress has been made in the Assessing Department regarding accountability, transparency, and accessibility to the public. And Madam President, I wanted to mention the unfortunate passing of yet, of another Nashville citizen, that being Teri Romano. Teri Romano was a woman who was very generous in the community. She gave many, gave of herself in terms of volunteering, and also financially, she contributed to many charitable causes in the city. She passed away last year around Christmas time. And I just wanted to mention her passing and say that that's a sad event for the city. She was living at 52 Main Street, right there at the Jackson Fall condos before her passing. And that is, you know, I'm sad to say that she, she is no longer, Teri is no longer with us. Nearing the end, Madam President, there is something on your desk tonight which we would like you to accept for a first reading, not to pass it, just a first reading by a suspension of the rules. It has to do with the, it's a very, when you read it, it's, it's a very detailed, a action which we will ultimately ask you to take, but it's related to the solar projects that Pennechuck is trying to undertake. They're trying to establish two 1-megawatt solar arrays north of the Pennechuck Middle School. And the agreement, which is, we're asking you to accept on a first reading and refer to a committee, is to allow, they're on a Class 6 road, and it has to do with the plowing of the Class 6 road, or the city's not having to have the obligation to plow that road. This is something that needs to be referred to the Planning Board, and action needs to be taken by the end of the month to make sure that the solar array goes ahead. Again, it's very, sort of almost a very technical measure, but it does need to be done by the end of the month, Madam President. So we're asking the board to accept this, again, just for a first reading. It would then go to a committee. We can discuss all the details. It can go to the Planning Board, and hopefully then come back to the board in two weeks for final action. Final, finally, Madam President, we are going to recognize in a, in a little, in a few moments, or in a little while, the High School Art Project Brave New World. We have a city, city mayor, Board of Alderman proclamation, which we're going to present at that time. And I hope that those students and faculty, teachers that are on the meeting will wait for that to occur, because they've done a great thing out near Amherst Street School. And I'm sure we all appreciate it and would very much like to recognize everything that they've done. And that was a number of items, Madam President, but a lot has happened. And, but that, with that, I conclude.
Thank you, Mayor. Responses to the remarks of the mayor? Seeing none. Attorney Bolton, would this be a good time to call on you?
Thank you, Madam President. We've had an addition to the legal staff that I wanted all of you to be aware of. Jesse Newman, who I can see down at the bottom of my screen, has joined the office as an attorney and right-to-know coordinator. As the title implies, he will be primarily concerned with right-to-know issues, but he will get into other aspects of municipal law and assistance generally. So I want you all to meet him, at least through this format. And feel free to contact him if the other lawyers in the office are unavailable for your needs at any time. And he has been working for a couple of weeks now and has maintained his enthusiasm thus far. So we are certainly pleased to have him aboard and look forward to a tremendous working relationship and successful collaboration. Jesse comes from Nashville, still resides here. So that is just one important aspect of his background that he brings to his new responsibilities. I know Alderman Dowd will be pleased to learn that among Jesse's other qualifications, he spent five years as a naval officer. So that is a background that will influence his usefulness to our department and the city as a whole. So.
And he lives in Ward 2, so.
He does, yes.
I really like him already.
I think he outranks you, however.
He doesn't work in Ward 4.
So please join me in welcoming Jesse. And as I say, I think you'll be well-served by his tenure here. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Bolton. Welcome. Attorney Newman, we're pleased to have you with the city and look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. I look forward to working with all of you as well.
Thank you. Okay, we are now going to have a Board of Health COVID update. I see we have Dr. Storres, Dr. Capetta, and Dr. Greenwich with us. I don't know if I'm missing anyone, but I'm not sure who might want to take this.
Good evening, Madam President. This is Bobby Bagley, yes, the Director for the Division of Public Health and Community Services. Thank you for having us in attendance at the Board of Alderman meeting this evening. Angela and I, our City of Nashville epidemiologists, will do a situation update, share information about the current status of COVID in Nashville with some numbers that are really important for us to all know about. We're also going to talk about the impact of COVID on our community. And then afterwards, our members of the Board of Health will also contribute to this information as well. So Angela's going to start us off with giving us the update on the numbers as of yesterday. We get our reports out from the state every evening. And so these numbers are up to date as far as yesterday. Angela?
Thank you, Bobby. So this is where we stand in regards to Nashville case activity. There are currently 4,644 cumulative cases in Nashville, and of those cases, approximately 563 are currently active and infectious, which means that approximately 87% of Nashville cumulative cases have recovered. We've had four additional COVID-related deaths in Nashville since last week, 60 total deaths and a case fatality rate of 1.2%. And our hospitalization rate in Nashville is at 2.4% compared to the state's rate of 1.7%. So in regards to community-level transmission in Nashville, we are currently exceeding two out of three indicators that push us into substantial community-based transmission. The first indicator is our incidence rate, which tells us how quickly disease is occurring in the community. So over the past 14 days, we've had 953.4 new cases per every 100,000 people, which is up about 175 standardized cases from this time last week. Then we have our percent positivity rate, which is a good indicator of the general spread of disease in the community at large. We're considered substantial in this category as well. So in the past week, there has been 489 tests conducted on average each day in Nashville, and 62 of those tests have been positive each day, which gives us a percent positivity rate of 12.8%, which is up about one percentage point from last week. And then we have our new hospitalizations, which show us how quickly hospitals are being burdened by disease. We're considered minimal in regards to new hospitalizations. In the past two weeks, we've had 2.2 new hospitalizations per 100,000 people, which is up about one standard hospitalization since last week. So now I'll move us into talking more about the impacts that we've seen of COVID-19 on the individual. And then Bobby will talk about the family and community impacts. So we contact about 70% of Nashville cases and provide them education or do a complete disease investigation. And when we're conducting these calls, we learn a lot about the individual impact that COVID-19 has. So first, there are the physiological impacts. You know, people are sick and uncomfortable. Many people have difficulty breathing and severe body pain. And symptoms can last anywhere from two days to four months. We've had people who have lost their sense of taste or smell for months at a time. And that doesn't sound like such a serious symptom, but it has a huge impact on people's health and well-being. You know, they're not able to taste their food. They can't smell if their breakfast is burning. And it's one of those symptoms that is persistent and does have a huge day-to-day impact on people's lives. And then we have the financial impact. People are out of work for the extent of their isolation or quarantine period. And then there's their cost of hospital or medical bills. And if one of your family members unfortunately passes away from this illness, there's the unexpected funeral costs on top of those medical and hospital bills. And then we have the psychological impacts where cases and their families are worried, anxious, scared, and they can quickly become down and depressed and feel isolated and alone.
So as Angela's talked about the individual impact, we know that individuals also make a part of a family unit. So with COVID being at substantial levels, the impact on our families is great. And the greater community spread of sprawl out, there to be an increase Sorry about that. When there is a substantial spread in the community, it also creates greater opportunities for family members when they're in the community, involved in different activities. It could be work. It could be going to small events, parties. We just came off of a couple of nice holiday celebrations. It allows for the individuals to be exposed. And then once they're exposed, it does impact their families. And from some of the, just the work that we've done, and some of the studies that we've looked at, the impact of the spread in the household can be up to 40% or higher, especially if there are multiple positive cases in the family or resulting in multiple positive cases in the families. And one of the studies that I read, that percentage rate can go up as high as 53%. And just from some of the investigations that we've been conducting, they've been up to 100% in some families. So that creates a strain, and also some of the physiological factors or psychological factors that Angela talked about, not only on the individual, but also on entire household. When this does occur, not all of the members, if they need to isolate or quarantine, are able to continue working from home. In fact, they have to be off. And so that does decrease their work hours. It decreases their days from work, which also then increases their loss in wages with it, which will also then impact their ability to be able to pay their bills. We've also seen from our investigations that in multi-generational homes, there's also difficulty or challenges with being able to isolate in their, their homes or out, or to be able to quarantine from one another. This also increases the opportunity for there to be spread in infection in the homes as well. And then what we see is that spread can occur in infants, and it does increase the spread to grandparents or older people that are in the home. That then allows for there to be, you know, the opportunity for hospitalization, and unfortunately can result even in death. And so that vulnerable population is also threatened when there's that family impact as well. We've also learned, and we also see, that families that have lower income are also stressed, and they suffer more economic impact as a result. Of course, if they can't go to work, or they can't work from home, that impacts their ability, again, to pay their bills. And we also have learned about there being increased food insecurity when this occurs. And with all of those things, our families make up a part of our community. And so then we also see the impact on our communities. And COVID itself as a pandemic across our country and the world also presents as an adverse community event. And so what that means is that it impacts children, it impacts the families, you know, in such a way that we're seeing this play out in so many different ways. And Angela talked about the, you know, the psychological, so the mental health piece as well. Currently, Nashville has about 23 facilities that are listed on what we call a watch list. And this is a list that's identified by the state when we report at least one to two cases. And that watch list is made up of different entities. And so in particular, for this time period, we've seen restaurants, and so there's at least six restaurants or bars on the list right now, at least one childcare facility, two healthcare facilities, and three long-term care facilities. And different And different weeks at different points in times during this pandemic, this list looks very different. And so we watch these things on a regular basis as a part of our surveillance that we could see what's going on in our community. We are moving to a phase, you know, where I want to say we're coming, and I know it's been long, Nashville, and Board members, it has been long. We're 10 months into this. We're really hoping to get over the hump of this. And hopefully in this last next three months, we can see a change, transition, and what's been happening with the case positivity rates and our percent positivity. Just hopefully we see these things going down. You know, so we're looking at how we can come together as a community to recover with our businesses and economic recovery, as well as with our education and academic recovery, with being able to get to the point where we can get the kids back in school, faculty and staff and all back in school as well. And then also the physical recovery because of, you know, just what COVID does to, you know, our bodies long-term. We know that in our community that we've been stretched for resources. We've got volunteers that are supporting the work that's being done to mitigate what we're seeing with the impact of COVID. And we also know and understand that we need to continue to build our individual and our community resilience by being supportive of one another over these next couple of months. We know, we believe, and we've seen it, that we're stronger when we work together and when we mitigate the spread of this disease. We've talked about for months the importance of wearing the masks. We've talked about the social distancing, the frequent washing down of surfaces, the hand washing, the staying home when we're sick. We know that those are all mitigative measures that work. The next phase that we're rolling into is our vaccination phase. This is going to be really important for us because this will actually help us get over, you know, that hump and provide some of the protection that we need to have with regards to COVID. And so the vaccine allocation, the mayor talked about this briefly, has rolled out in our state. We have gone through Phase 1A, and that does continue. We're still trying to get as many of our healthcare providers, first-line healthcare workers, first-line response workers vaccinated during this time period. And we're going to be rolling into Phase 1B, which will extend to including individuals over the age of 75, as well as folks that have comorbidities, hypertension, diabetes, individuals that are working or that live in congregate settings. We're looking to move into this phase within the next couple of weeks. So by the end of January, we should be vaccinating these individuals as well. And you can see from this slide with this vaccine allocation, there is a timeline from March, from, sorry, December through May and beyond is when we're hoping to get the majority of those in our community vaccinated that want to be vaccinated. It's not mandated, but we're hoping that as many people that can will be vaccinated so that we can create the herd community, the herd immunity that's needed so that we can see COVID slow down and just be done. I think we're all kind of done with this. And so as we move into this next phase of vaccine allocation, this will help us get there quicker. I know that we have some of our Board of Health members that are on. President, well, sure, if there's time for them to give some comment to some of this information as well as the impact that we expect to see going forward.
We would be happy to take comment from the Board of Health, in fact, encourage it. So. Anyone?
Oh, hi. I'm Chuck Capetta, pediatrician in Nashua and Board of Health member. Mayor, Madam President, thank you, and the mayor and your wonderful Oldman. Thank you for all your help these last few months on this very difficult and devastating illness. It's, I can only, and of course Bobby and Angela for their hard work and the Public Health Department for all their putting together the slides, but on behalf of our fellow members, I just can't emphasize as a frontline worker that, you know, the fight isn't over. I think the vaccine rollout is a big step, but every day it's, it's just what we've said here. Hand washing, shows are just insane. Mask wearing can't be forgotten. We've seen with our discussion over the past few weeks over the curfew and things like that, that we're seeing some of the effects of what's happened and and the two holidays that it brought. And so I thank the Board again for having that great discussion. That was very good. But I think individually we should be held accountable, both at the, you know, in the household level and our individual bubbles. I think we have to expand those bubbles only very judiciously and carefully. I've heard today even in my office, oh, once we get the vaccine, maybe we'll be able to, you know, go see everybody. And I think that's the problem here. I think it's, it's really a fallacy that the vaccine will do. It's not a, it's a great step, but it's not going to protect everybody. So it's your individual right to have the vaccine and take it, but I think we just need to keep, you know, pushing through. It's a marathon, not a 100-yard dash. And, and then at the school level, at the individual clinics, on the front line, back line, and everything in between. I think we're just, you know, we're blessed that we have an opportunity to maybe make a change here, but we're a long way to go. So that would be my first initial comments. Happy to take questions, too.
Anyone have questions for Dr. Capetta? Alderman Dow.
Yes, sir. I'm not sure which, who can answer this, but are we getting the amount of vaccine that we expected? And I noticed that there's a lot of places like in Massachusetts where they're setting up centers for giving the vaccines. They're making exceptions as to who can give the shots. And, and they're giving everyone their first dose rather than waiting with the vaccines for a second dose. Can you address any of those as to how we're addressing that either in New Hampshire or specifically Nashua?
Well, I probably would allow my colleague Bobby or Bobby helping that answer, but I will just speak for Dartmouth. I just think we, since I've been at Dartmouth for 30 years, I, we've just been told the state didn't get their allocated amount that, I don't know how the process happened, but I think everybody asked for a certain quota, but given federal mandates or things down the, down the pathway, I think every state is witnessing they decrease the amount they expected. And now having second Plan Bs and Plan Cs come into play. So I guess I can only say how much I know as, as much as anyone else reads in the papers and, but that's what we've recently heard through the Dartmouth system, that we didn't get what we thought, but we're going to still make it work as much as we can. So. So, but the rest of it, I'd probably ask Bobby if she could comment on any other rollout of vaccine that she knows.
Thank you, Dr. Capetta. So with the, the expectation of the allocation per state has turned out to be a little differently than what was expected. But with what we have received, what our state is trying to do is roll the vaccine out to our regions according to the, the risk factors that have been identified and according to some of the data that shows where the highest rates of cases are and the highest rates of deaths are occurring. The importance of using a strategy to vaccinate those that are at highest risk led our state to stick to the allocation of making sure our healthcare workers and first responders were vaccinated first because that will help us preserve our workforce. And then followed by those populations that are at highest risk for hospitalizations and death were key in the strategy of vaccine allocation. They're doing it by regions, and so each region gets to send to the state on a weekly basis how much vaccine they actually think they can get into arms because they don't want to waste vaccine. And so as clinics are planned, and we have our fix-site clinic over at National High South, what happens is that folks go in and they register. They get a certain number of people registered, and then they do the vaccinations based on how many people have registered for that particular site for that day. The opportunity to expand clinics is coming on quickly because there is an expectation there's going to be a large number of vaccine that's going to be distributed across the country within the next couple of weeks to catch up because the feds do realize that that rollout did not turn out the way that they expected. And so more vaccine will be coming into New Hampshire as well as other states as well. And then as that does occur, there's going to be a pickup in the clinics that are that are scheduled across the state as well, and vaccine will be made available at different places. So primary care providers, once they're onboarded, once they're set up in the system, will be able to administer vaccinations. We at the Health Department, because we lead with a lead for our public health region in Greater Nashville region, will be able to do more clinics, and all of the planning around this has started to kick off. In fact, I got a call from the state just this evening asking what did we need at our Health Department to start planning some of these clinics? And so that discussion was a good discussion. And so we'll be working with our partners at our federally qualified health centers, you know, with Dartmouth, Harbor Homes, Lamprey, and we'll be getting some clinic sites set up. We've had some of the churches in our community volunteer some of their sites as well. And we've had some volunteers actually get in contact with us that are nurses and physicians that are retired that will help. And so we should see something within the next two to four weeks kind of expand and take off relatively quickly.
Does anyone else have questions? Alderman, please.
Thank you, Madam President. This question is more directed to Director Bagley. Director Bagley, at last night's Human Affairs Committee meeting, you mentioned about setting up these clinics and so on, and the registry that we'll be, we'll be having for this next phase, kind of the revamping of this registry. And I asked you a question at that time about would the vaccines be given at primary care offices and so on. I was contacted by someone from a primary care office today who told me that they don't have the resources. If that's the case, will, two questions here. Will the kind of city pick up that slot? And my next question is, how do those who go into the 1B category, how would they register? How would that be? I know the registration isn't out yet, but how would they notify? Will it be on our city's website or will it be on the state's website?
Thank you, Alderman Cleef, for that question. So with the allocation to primary care providers' offices, that's going to be made available if they choose to. So we do know that that's going to be a heavy lift for primary care providers because they still have other work that they have to do when folks come in for other issues. And so for those that choose to sign up to administer vaccine, that, they will actually get that. As far as the registration, there's still a system that's being used. It's called the VAMS, and then there's another system that's being set up called the VMS, our Vaccine Administration System. People will be able to register through those sites, and there will be a link. So, so now when I say this, it doesn't mean it's going to be available tomorrow, right? So there will be a link. There will be some communication from the Department of Health and Human Services of where of communication that comes out where people will be able to go online and will be able to register on a link. And then once they do that, they'll be, they'll also be able to pick which sites they might want to be vaccinated at based on what's being published. So we will have the opportunity to set up sites in the community, again, working with some of our community partners, some of our, the expectation would be that we would work with places like Dartmouth, like Lamprey, Harbor Care, and do some vaccine planning so that we can have some of these clinics available throughout the, throughout the community. It's all still in the, I don't, I want to say it's in the planning phases because of the fact that we still have to get that link set up. And once the state has that set up, that information will be pushed out and we'll be able to communicate it. We'll have it on our website as well as it will be on the state's website, and all of our partnering organizations will have that link as well.
Just one quick follow-up comment. Madam President, thank you. Director Bagley, you guys put out in, your office puts out a great kind of weekly news bulletin type of thing, and I really appreciate that. Could we make sure that something like this gets put into that? I know personally, I send it out and I encourage other people to read it as such. So if it's there and then the link is on the website, I think it gives more opportunity. I get daily questions from constituents and, you know, I've told them to, you know, check nh.gov and do this and so on, but they don't want to hear that. They really want to be able to. So if they're looking for it and know it's going to be there, I think it would be a great idea. And that's just a comment, and you guys are doing phenomenal work. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Welcome. Does anyone else have any questions? Is there anyone else from the Board of, oh, Alderman Lopez? Go ahead.
Okay, so first question for Director Bagley. How long have you owned a flying dog? And then second question for Dr. Capetta. With regards to the timeframe for immunity, my understanding is that the inoculations should last for a year and that people are starting to say they may be able to get a booster shot to get another year out of that. Are we going to have to worry about a resurgence of this next year? Is that something we should be thinking about now?
Well, I would say, I mean, it's possible because viruses mutate, and unfortunately, the vaccines we have for the normal virus, the normal flu shot every year have to be looked at because of ability of vaccines to, viruses to change how they make themselves up and therefore the one-shot last year wasn't good. A couple of years ago, we didn't have one that was as effective in past flu shots. So I guess I also know that Dr. Greenwich is on the line tonight. If he could comment about the efficacy of the vaccine. I don't mean to put you on the spot, Dr. Greenwich, but if you're there, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'm here. You'll have to deal with the disembodied voice. Yeah, so that is, it's the thought that this will last for a year is based largely on mathematical models with how long antibodies persist in people's bloodstream. So we, we really don't know. I think an annual booster for that kind of virus, especially when it's still prevalent in the world, is likely. I've heard estimates that on a global scale, we won't be out of this pandemic until probably 2023. So if the virus is present in the world, it's highly likely that we're going to have to keep a a certain high level of immunity in our communities. And so I can readily see that boosters will be needed. Whether that changes slightly from year to year is not known at this point, but as I heard Dr. Fauci describing within a, you know, a week or so ago, that the technology to bring this vaccine online is very robust. So if they have to change the vaccine for next year, they can do it within a couple of months. So I think boosters are likely because the virus is probably not going to go away by the end of this coming year.
Thank you.
Thank you. You all said Alderman Lopez?
Well, I just, if I'm wrong, then any of the doctors in the room, feel free to answer it, but I think one of the takeaways from this is it's easier to prevent an outbreak than to deal with one. So when things start to come up like, oh, we have a new version spreading and it's in this region, we should all be paying very close attention.
Okay. Dr. Storres, you look like you have something to say.
Yeah, I was just waiting for everybody else to get whatever off their chest. One thing I wanted to mention is I got the vaccine today. My arm is still working, so that's good news there. I'd also like to comment on high regards for the New Hampshire National Guard, who we're administering. Good group of guys. There was only men there except for the nurse, who wasn't with the National Guard. They were really instrumental in making people feel safe, and I encourage everyone to get their vaccine. Since the topic was brought up, we have three variants that are already in the United States, probably even more, I heard as many as five. UK, South Africa, and then I think Nigeria. The UK one you already all know about, that shut down England. They believe that the vaccine that we have, hopefully, will be able to take care of that. So the thing is, even though you get the vaccine, the game isn't over. You still have to, you know, wear a mask, do the social distancing, even if it's just to remind other people that that's what they should do, especially if they haven't had the vaccine. I'd also like to compliment the Public Health Department. They are working constantly on this. I can't even tell you the number of hours. The mayor himself is on the partner's phone call on Monday morning. We, in the beginning, we had phone calls at 8:00 every day, seven days a week for weeks. So people are really working hard on this and trying to keep our community as healthy as possible. But it is a virus, just like the flu. And as Dr. Capetta said, And as Dr. Capeta said, one year, we had a flu vaccine. Unfortunately, was, we didn't get the results that we wanted because we guessed wrong on the virus that ended up being here. So, we will try to keep you up to date on everything. Feel free to ask questions. Alderman Lopez has been great as liaison to our board, and we appreciate that as well. Any questions?
Anyone have questions to Dr. Storres? That's why you waited till the end.
Yes, ma'am.
Smart guy.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to thank each of you, Dr. Capeta, Dr. Granik, and Dr. Storres for being with us this evening. We appreciate your input. We value you as a board. And thank you very much for being here tonight and for everything you're doing to keep the city safe, as well as Director Bagley and her great crew of people who, like you said, work tirelessly. Everywhere I go, I see them working. It's pretty amazing. So, thank you all very much.
Does that mean we can get a raise? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have recognition period.
Recognizing and honoring the Brave New World Art Project.
And I will recognize Mayor Donches.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I do have our proclamation, but before I get into that, I wanted to mention some of the people who have been active in the Brave New World Project that may be on the call tonight. Students who, and I, I'm not sure everybody, there could be others, but these are the ones I was told would likely be on. We have students from Nashua North, Andrew Berry, Joe Ristine, Dev Suhuck, and Ben Klein. We also have National Honor Society Officers Mia and Michelle. We have Brentwood students Raven, Natalie Pineda, and Andre Dabney. Also, staff people who are very active. Stephanie Suhuck Thomas, teacher. Robin Perringer, another art teacher. And Greg Warren, who's from Brentwood and supported the project. So, I want to thank them. And if there's anyone else on the call that we are not aware of, thank you as well. Madam President, the recognition reads as follows. Whereas the public art project Brave New World: Resilience in the Time of COVID inspires unity and peace with its uplifting tone. This collaborative project was created by eighty Nashua students, Rodney Coffin, art teacher from Nashua North, Robin Perringer, art teacher from Nashua South, and Stephanie Suhuck Thomas, art teacher from Brentwood Academy. It is a much-needed ray of light during this dark time. And whereas displayed on a chain-link fence outside Amherst Street Elementary School, Brave New World is a series of positive messages in the form of signs and images saying things like, "Teach peace, love, work hard, dream big, you got this, be brave," and many others. The exhibit is meant to encourage positive thoughts, motivate and remind us of our community's resilience as we continue to navigate the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the students and teachers were inspired by the Choose Love movement, particularly its socially-emotional learning lesson on positive thinking. It resolves that by consciously changing one negative thought today to a positive one, you can potentially change the course of your day, how you feel, and change your life. The project is dedicated in the memory of North student Tyler Almeida, who lived the Choose Love life as an inspiration to all who knew him. In addition to the exhibit, the students and teachers created a website to share the behind-the-scenes of the project. And whereas, thank you to these incredible students and teachers for showing us through art that we all matter and that we can get anything as long as we do it together. Now, therefore, I, Jim Donches, Mayor of the City of Nashua and the Board of Aldermen, do hereby recognize the students and art teachers behind the Brave New World Art Project as kind, caring, creative citizens who exemplify what Nashua is all about.
Pretty awesome. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to all of you who were involved in that project. I drive by that beautiful display every day, and it just makes me smile. It's pretty awesome. So, thank you all for everything you've done. I think it's a nice thing for the citizens of Nashua to see and drive by. And it's very, very heartwarming. So, thank you to all of you, teachers, students, everyone. And congratulations.
And thank you very much for the recognition. I know that we all greatly appreciate that. And we're glad that it can lift your spirits because that was the intent. So, thank you very much for recognizing.
Thank you. Thank you, Robin. Thank you, everyone. Okay, reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I will declare the minutes of the Special Board of Aldermen meeting of December 21, 2020, and the regular Board of Aldermen meeting of December 22, 2020, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications have been received from Lisa M. Photo, Director of Public Works, regarding the referral from the Board of Aldermen of Ordinance O2040, from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communications received from, and from Kim Kleiner, Administrative Services Director, regarding public information and transparency.
There being no objection, I will accept the communications and place them on file. We have now the period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening.
Laura Cahoon.
Ms. Cahoon?
Yes. It's Laura Cahoon from 30 Greenwood Drive. I'd like to go on the record that I think Ms. Kleiner's memo within the agenda tonight is a joke. If you call any other town and/or city, they are much more transparent than the city of Nashua, and they are willing to give information to any resident in a timely fashion. And this is not something within the city of Nashua is currently doing. Since the city has hired Ms. Kleiner, her number-one job has been to hide information from residents. Her updating the city website has been a total disaster. It has been fifteen months, and the city still cannot get it right. Ms. Kleiner has made it more difficult for the average resident to seek information on the city website. As of today, the city's website is still showing 2019 property cards, even though they closed the system back in October of 2020. Is Ms. Kleiner trying to make it impossible for the residents to file an abatement on their property taxes this year? Recently, Ms. Kleiner showed her inexperience at her job by stating that the new chief of assessing had ethical standards, including fair treatment to coworkers, before fair treatment to residents. The chief's number-one job is to make sure that the Nashua taxpayers have fair assessments and show no favoritism towards anyone. Bottom line is, the chief's job is to make sure that assessing is running smoothly and correctly and that he has ethical standards in dealing with all Nashua taxpayers because it is the taxpayer who is paying his salary. Thank you.
Anyone else that wants to give public comment?
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street.
Okay.
Hi, I'd like to just speak briefly about the transparency chart. The mayor is correct. There's nineteen boxes checked off in Nashua, and the next community with the highest number of boxes is eight, and I think that's Hudson. But I can tell you, I would much rather work with Hudson, Manchester, and Keene than I would with Manchester. Because what's on a website doesn't necessarily indicate the true transparency of a department. And the mayor underestimates what the people factor, the human factor of transparency. And that's what we're missing in our assessing department, as well as some serious staffing issues. You know, and to be fair, thirteen of those boxes were checked off when John Duhamel was there. And probably when Angelo, I think John didn't add anything, Angelo Moreno was there. Angelo Moreno was pretty progressive about open records, getting GIS up and having those property search tools and those extra buttons on our website. So, we still led the way with those two past chiefs. And yet, we got into all this trouble. So, you know, I can tell you, Manchester only has six boxes. But I call up to the chief there and I ask for an Excel copy of their sales analysis spreadsheet, and I get it in like thirty minutes. In the city of Nashua, it took me thirty days. And the legal office said they had to review, trying to find an exemption to prevent me from having it. I mean, that's what they were doing. We're looking for a way to keep it from me. I do the same thing in Keene, the same thing in Hudson. I can get on the phone and have a thirty-minute talk with somebody. And I can tell you what I learned in thirty minutes is probably equivalent to twenty-five write-to-knows I have to do in this city. So, it's really been unpleasant. And that's not transparency to me, those boxes. And Ms. Cahoon is right, the 2020 cards aren't online. And it's unprecedented that that data isn't available to the public now. It's never been this late, ever. And I actually asked Ms. Wally about that, and she said that there, she couldn't think of a time that that had happened. But we're halfway through abatement season, and we don't have access to the cards for your abatements. And I would have never done a software update. I think it was one of the biggest mistakes the Board of Aldermen made to approve that with no chief on board, with a high turnover IT department, and we're short-staffed in the office. You took on one heck of a project that, quite frankly, whether you ran AP 5 or AP 4, I would have known the difference. And I still don't know the difference, except that I feel that some of the reporting in the new software is less transparent than the old software. And I'm kind of disappointed with that. So, you know, whatever the software problems are, Ms. Cahoon is correct. Fifteen months has just been a long time. And these property record cards aren't correct as they stand printed, and the proper data isn't even up yet. So, let's not forget what people mean to transparency, please. And let's try to get City Hall open.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Thank you. Seeing none. Communications requiring final approval. Communications requiring final approval.
Madam President, Clerk Lawring looks like she may be frozen.
Okay. Okay, so, we have a letter from Mayor Jim Donches regarding a multi-year contract award lead paint risk assessment and inspection services in an amount not to exceed $336,000. Homing Gaff, Harriet Gaffray.
Peace. I motion to accept, place on file, and award the contract for the lead paint risk assessment/inspection services to Alchemalia Lead Management in the amount not to exceed $336,000. Funding will be through Department 184 Irving Programs, Account 54225, Lead Paint Base Paint Hazard Control Grant by Roll Call. And I just want to speak to it a little bit, just to say that Director Skema was before us, and she, we're very happy that this is the largest grant that we have received in terms of lead paint. So, that's a plus for the city of Nashua. So, thank you to her and her team.
Thank you. So, the motion is to accept and place on file. Discussion on that motion?
Madam President?
Alderman Clemens.
Yeah, it's to accept, place on file, and award the contract.
Oh, I'm sorry, and to award the contract. You're right.
President Wiltshire, can you hear me now?
I can now. Thank you. Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Lo.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You are fourteen yeses and zero nays. And that motion carries. Petitions.
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Patricia L. Berry of Hudson, New Hampshire, to the Office of Deputy Treasurer, Deputy Tax Collector for an indefinite term effective March 1, 2021, and respectfully request that this appointment be confirmed. Respectfully submitted David G. Fredette, Treasurer, Tax Collector.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointment as read and refer Patricia L. Berry of Hudson, New Hampshire to the Special Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee scheduled for Thursday, January 21, 2021. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I will declare the report of the December 28, 2020 Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the January 4, 2021 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the January 6, 2021 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of the mayor's appointments.
Business and Industrial Development Authority.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Lydia Foley to Bruce Street, Nashua, for a term to expire September 13, 2023 to the Business and Industrial Development Authority. Is Lydia Foley with us this evening? I don't see her. She will be sworn in at a later date.
Cable Television Advisory Board.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Andrew Sernata, 129 Shelley Drive, Nashua, for a term to expire January 1, 2024 to the Cable Television Advisory Board. Is Mr. Sernata with us this evening? Nope, I don't see him either. He will be sworn in at a later date.
Cultural Connections Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Eric Drewitt, 52 Main Street, Nashua, for a term to expire December 31, 2023. I'm sorry. For a term to expire December 31, 2023 to the Cultural Connections Committee. Is Mr. Drewitt with us this evening? No, not seeing him. He will be sworn in at a later date.
Downtown Improvement Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Mary Lou Blaisdell, 32 Webster Street, Nashua, and Rich Lanin, 7D Tiger Drive, Nashua, for terms to expire December 31, 2023 to the Downtown Improvements Committee. I know I saw Mr. Lanin. And I don't know if Mary Lou Blaisdell is on.
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. Corporation Counsel.
Raise your right hand, Rich. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Downtown Improvement Committee according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Arts Commission.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointment of Jennifer Anand, 7-2 Hickory Lane Hollis, for a term to expire February 1, 2024 to the Nashua Arts Commission. Is Ms. Anand with us this evening?
I am.
She is. Okay. Corporation Counsel will swear you in.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Nashua Arts Commission according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Thomas Monahan, Twenty-eight Swart Terrace, Nashville, for a term to expire October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five to the National Housing and Redevelopment Authority. I know Mr. Monahan is with us this evening. Corporation Counsel will swear you in.
Raise your right hand, Tom. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Nashua Housing and Redevelopment Authority according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of, of the state of New Hampshire? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Tom, and thank you so much for your willingness to continue serving on the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. We appreciate having you there.
Zoning Board of Adjustment.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Jay Menkara, Thirteen Mount Pleasant Street, Nashville, for a term to expire September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Is Jay with us this evening? Don't see him. He will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second. Till appropriation of fifty thousand dollars to feasibility study for the future reuse of the Elm Street Middle School Building.
I'm sorry, Alderman Clemmons.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I move for indefinite postponement of R. Two thousand and seventeen by roll call.
Motion is for indefinite postponement. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Dow.
Just real quickly, the, the money for this was, was appropriated from another venue. So this isn't needed, and that's why it's being indefinitely postponed.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. Motion before us is for indefinite postponement of R. Two thousand and seventeen. Further discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeses and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution Two Thousand and Seventeen is declared indefinitely postponed.
Second reading of Resolution R. Two Thousand One Hundred relative to the rescinding of authorized unissued debt.
Alderman Dow.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend R. Two Thousand One Hundred by replacing it with a Goldenrod copy of amendments made at the Budget Review Committee by roll call. I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, we actually didn't approve the, the, this amendment. We said we were going to move it on to this full board for approval. There are two numbers that, that were transposed incorrectly on the original legislation. The first is on R. Oh-nine-two-zero-three in the amount issued. Instead of the originally listed seven million, three hundred and one thousand, it's seven million, three hundred and one thousand and seven hundred dollars. The other item to correct is on R. Fifteen-one-fifty-four under the amount issued. There was one missing, so the correct amount is one million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand. So those are the two changes, and recommend approval of the, the, the change.
The motion is to replace R. Two Thousand One Hundred with the Goldenrod copy of the amendments made at the Budget Committee. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeses and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'd like to make a most, motion for final passage of R. Two Thousand One Hundred as amended by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeses and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution Twenty dash one hundred is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of Resolution R. Two Thousand One O Three relative to the transfer of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from prior year escrow funds, Department One Ninety-four contingency account seven one, pardon me, account seven zero one-two-two, operating expense contingency into the Governor's Office for Emergency Relief and Recovery Gopher Grant.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion for final passage of R. Dash Twenty dash One O Three by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeses and zero nays.
And R. Two Thousand One O Four is declared duly adopted.
Second reading.
One oh three.
One oh three.
One oh three is duly adopted. Sorry.
Second reading of Resolution R. Two Thousand One O Four relative to the transfer of nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars from Department One Fifty Police Account Nine Zero Five Three Zero, expense transfer to grant funds into the Governor's Office for Emergency Release Relief and Recovery Gopher Grant.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of Resolution Twenty dash One Zero Four by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes, sorry.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeses and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution Twenty dash One O Four is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of ordinance O. Two Thousand Forty-One, amending the administrative officer ordinance.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of zero dash twenty dash zero four one by roll call, please.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeses and zero nays.
That motion carries, and ordinance Twenty dash forty-one is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of ordinance of Two Thousand Forty-Two, amending the ordinance on maintaining adequate unassigned general fund balance.
Alderman Jettie.
I move to amend O. Dash Twenty dash Forty-Two by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of amendments made at the Budget Review Committee by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Jettie.
So at the committee meeting, we noticed that the ordinance is originally drafted, contain the word each two times, was just a redundant thing. And we just made this amendment to correct that, that redundancy.
Anyone else? Anyone have any discussion on that? Motion to amend? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeses and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Alderman Jettie.
So now I'd like to move for final passage of O. Dash Twenty dash Forty-Two as amended by roll call. And then I'd like to speak to that.
Alderman Jettie.
So what this ordinance does is this summer, we, we realized, it was pointed out to us that although our ordinances require us to maintain an undesignated general fund balance of a minimum of ten percent of appropriations, the ordinance requires that it be the appropriations plus the statewide enhanced education amount and, and the amount for local school net tax amount and the county appropriation. And it's, we, we found out that it's been our practice for as long as anyone can remember that we actually maintain at least ten percent of general fund appropriations without without factoring in the state or, or district school amounts or the county appropriation. And so just to be consistent with what our actual practice is, which our CFO tells us is he's completely comfortable with it. That's what he's been doing. And it's, our bond rating people have no problem with the way we've been doing it for all of these years. So we're just amending the ordinance to make it consistent with what actual, our actual practice is.
Thank you, Alderman Jettie. Is there discussion on the motion for final passage as amended? Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, this is a good, good piece of legislation. I agree with what Alderman Jettie said. And actually, this was one of the things that Alderman, former Alderman Teeboom and I actually agreed on. And I think he would probably be pretty pleased with the, the changes that we're making here because it was always one of the things that drove him crazy, to change this. So, so it's good that we're doing that tonight.
Any other discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yeses and zero nays.
That motion carries, and ordinance Twenty dash Forty-Two is declared duly adopted as amended. New business resolutions.
First reading of Resul, R. Two Thousand One O Five, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of one million, five hundred thousand dollars to purchase two new engine pumper trucks for the fire department.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Clea, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Dow, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clemmons, myself. Did I get everyone? Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, at seven PM.
Madam President, would you add me to that?
Alderman Harriet Gaffray. Thank you.
First reading of Resolution R. Two Thousand One O Six, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of two million, seven hundred thousand dollars for various improvements at the Solid Waste Department, Four Hills Landfill, and the purchase of two refuge trucks.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Dow, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Cleaver, and myself.
And Harriet Gaffray.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, at seven PM.
First reading of Resolution R. Two Thousand One O Seven, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of five million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the city sewer infrastructure program.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Dow, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clea, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Harriet Gaffray, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Clemmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a public hearing, a, a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, at seven PM.
Madam President?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie. I think you, you mean two thousand and twenty-one for these hearings, these public hearings.
Yes, you're right.
I'll do that again.
Sorry about that. It's, it's still January. It's hard to get over this. Just kidding. Thank you, Alderman. Just kidding. Thank you, Alderman Jettie. I do mean twenty twenty one. Madam Clerk.
First reading of resolution R twenty one one oh eight, meaning the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Board of Public Works of the City of Nashua, New Hampshire, and Local three six five of the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees, A F L C I O, Ask Me, from July first, twenty seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty three, and authorizing related transfers.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Lopez, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Cle and myself. Did I get everyone? Okay. Given its first reading, that will be assigned to the Budget Review Committee. Without objection, I will allow for the suspension of rules for first reading of resolution twenty dash one oh nine that was received after the agenda was prepared.
First reading of resolution R twenty one one oh nine, authorizing issuing of building permits on Old Harris Road, a class six highway.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Cle, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Cleaver, and myself. Given, anyone else? Did I miss anyone? Okay. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Penitent Check Water Committee and the National City Planning Board. New business ordinances.
There are none.
Period for general public comment. Is there anyone that would like to give public comment? Anyone? Okay, not seeing anyone. Remarks by members of the board. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I would be remiss if I didn't make any comments in regards to the terrible situation that occurred last Wednesday at our U S Capitol. I think it affects everyone on so many levels. And the only thing that I will, I will keep this brief, I am very happy that the House of Representatives is going forward with the impeachment of the president. I am happy that the FBI is looking into the people who stormed the Capitol. As far as I'm concerned, these people are infidels. And I am very happy that our law enforcement here in the city of Nashua and the state of New Hampshire are on top of any shenanigans that might come up between now and the inauguration and afterwards. We need to stay strong and be united as Americans. There's a time for disagreement. We can disagree about, you know, politics, about our candidates, where we stand on the issues. But there is no place. You know, you can fight an election just like the president did through the courts. Even though, you know, he got turned down a million times, that's just how it is. And that's our American system. And we live another day. You know, we have turnover. Our term, we have term limits in this country. They're called elections. So I encourage everyone to stay involved. And, you know, if you be vigilant, if you see something, say something. But really, in our society, in my opinion, there's no justification for a violent revolution. We do our revolution at the ballot box. That's the way it should be. That's how I believe and how I was taught that America, what is and should be, and I'm proud to be an American citizen. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to welcome Attorney Bolton back to the fold. There's no one happier to see him than I am than colleagues and friends for decades, probably longer than neither one of us would like to admit. But I'm glad to see him back and active and hope he doesn't rush too much into the fray and has time to recover. Also, I'd like to welcome Attorney Newman to the fold. I know that we have hired him predominantly to look at the numerous right to no law issues that we have had. And I don't know if any of the other board members have the same feeling I do, but I would like to know what all of these requests have cost the city over the last year. And if anything positive that would have done something beneficial for the city or even homeowners has come out of all of those right to no requests. Because it's extensive amounts of money. I'd like to know what the estimate is of that amount of money and, and you know, what, what all of that has been used for. Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to comment on the Brave New World Art Project. I too have driven by it a few times, and the first time I drove by it, I really wasn't even aware of what the project was, and I pulled onto Sergeant Ave and parked my car there and walked over to look at it, and it was more impressive to literally walk by it than just to drive by it. And I strongly recommend anybody in the city, but especially those in wards two, four, and three, it's right there in your backyard. Take the time to go and, and look at it. It's quite an amazing job that the students and, and the teachers did. I too would like to welcome back Attorney Bolton and welcome Attorney Newman on board. I also want to make a comment relative to the safety here in Nashua and and in the state. And I, I had a number of phone calls from constituents this morning, as I said, and Chief Kargman, I contacted him and asked him, you know, are, are we safe? And, you know, while he does not know what's going to happen tomorrow, they're on top of it. There, we have an officer that's assigned with the FBI anti-violence unit, and we stay on track of it, and I think the citizens should feel safe. I believe our National Guard are right there. They may be helping with vaccines, but they're also ever on duty. So at a moment's notice, they will be where they need to be as, as our state police and so on. So I think the citizens of New Hampshire and Nashua should feel safe and proud, but that does not mean that you let your guard down. So try to lead a little bit with love, and as this Brave New World Art Project speaks, choose love and stay safe and try to turn one of those negatives into a positive. Thank you.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. Just another project that I wanted to highlight and thanks some folks for was the, and we've heard a presentation on it here at the Board of Alderman. It was the renovations that happened at the National Police Athletic League that were finalized towards the end of December. Just wanted to thank Hope for New Hampshire for all that they did. They did the construction in twenty twenty, which was a wild year for everybody. Somehow, they got it all done, and that facility is going to be, you know, it's something that didn't cost Nashville Pal anything. They came in, donated their time and resources. But it's going to be a great community center for, for kids in that neighborhood and the entire city for years to come. So thank you to them. It was a great article in The Telegraph this weekend about it, and you know, hopefully, soon enough, all the, all those kids will be back there full time and able to use it to its fullest extent. The other thing, just to follow up on what some other folks were saying, you know, so I think one of the things that this board sets a great example for the community as far as civility is concerned. We have our disagreements, but our disagreements are not personal, very, very professional. And I'm hoping that we, we continue that, not just at this board, with the community as a whole, as we take on other difficult issues in twenty twenty one. We set the example. We keep things so that they're, they're productive. We want to hear from folks, but, you know, I'm not sure what people think they're going to accomplish by coming in and insulting staff members and, and all of us. We're certainly willing to hear and want to hear from folks, but, you know, please, let's, let's remember that we're all here to try to do the best for, for the city and the folks who live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I too wanted to say again, welcome back Attorney Bolton, and welcome to the team Attorney Newman. This is a time of year that we celebrate Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. As part of Southern New Hampshire outreach of Black Unity, we have had thirty seven breakfasts, which we're not having this year. But I do want to share that what the plan is, and I will send out something later. We decided that we were just going to, we were going to play one of his speeches, and we have several community members that will speak to the speech, including Melanie LeVake, former, former Senator for Nashua, Minister Ray Ely from the Fellowship Baptist Church at fifty Ash Street. And I don't remember. I know it's one more, but I can't remember the name. But there'll be approximately five speakers that will speak to whatever is played that morning, and it will be on Zoom. Alpine Grove was welcoming us back, but we're following the rules. No, we're not supposed to be congregating together like that. So we finally decided that, yep, we still needed to do something, even if it's for our children. So we still will have a youth speaker as usual, but the adult speakers will be probably several for maybe ten, fifteen minutes as to what that's about. So I am inviting all my colleagues here and statewide and everywhere else as usual, and the community at large. So there will be something sent out for that. I also, and that will be on Monday, approximately nine A M. And we figured it'd be probably hour, hour and a half on Zoom or so. But I also wanted to mention that First Baptist Church, who's celebrating their thirty ninth year celebration of M L K. And let me see, I did pull it up here. I think I pulled it up. I know it's Saturday. And I think Mr. Mayor is still here. Probably have more. I did have it up on my screen. I don't know. Oh, there it is. Okay. Saturday, January the sixteenth at seven P M, the keynote speaker is Reverend Dr. Willett Ashley Senior, and he's co-chair of Anti-Racism Coalition of Faith. They also will have musical performances like First Baptist Church Chantel Choir, New Hampshire Gay Men's Choirs, Julia Leonard Vocal Solists, and other musical performers. And that will be online as well. So I will send this out to Donna. So hopefully she can share it with everyone else so that if you want to be in attendance on Saturday, which is usually a good time, great time, and great speeches. And actually, for Monday as well, anyone in the public that wish to join, we'd be happy to have you. Any comments you want to make, we'll be happy to have that as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I just want to first correct my colleague Alderman Tenza. The organization that did all the work at PAL is called Building on Hope. There are small group of people, and they've done some pretty amazing projects, so they're definitely worth checking in, and we were really lucky to have them choose Nashua as a community. And PAL, I won't say is lucky because they, they are a force multiplier. They usually hit way outside their weight class, not only when they're boxing, but when they're doing other programs. So we're just lucky to have PAL. I wanted to express my condolences to D P W and the loss of Andre. I wanted to thank the Board of Health for taking the time to come out and present, and for all the work that public health and healthcare providers have been doing behind the scenes after hours over the weekends to try to get us all through this. I wanted to also thank Alderman, Alderwoman Cle. It's been a while, but we did since Christmas, but she took the lead on Operation Enduring Welcomes Christmas Tree Decorating Competition this year. We still have veterans decorating their hallways and trying to celebrate the, the holidays as best they could. We had food donated by Soul Sisters, and then again for New Year's by Chick-fil-A. So it's little things like that that I hope help people get through this difficulty. As Alderman Clemmons pointed out, there was a lot of very unfortunate decisions made in the Capitol over the week, and I mean, a lot of them were by President Trump and by people who I believe were trying to represent him. But I've gotten a lot of calls from people locally, a lot of concerns about, you know, how, how safe they feel, and all I can do is remind them that this is Nashua, and we're all neighbors. We all know each other. You can still contact your aldermen. You can still contact your state representatives. New Hampshire is a small state, and I like to think that we're a little bit closer together. To the people who decided that they were going to get caught up in the mob and, you know, run off with podiums and violently attack police officers. I can't speak for the president, but you betrayed everybody who believes in the same things as you, because that's also what I'm hearing a lot of is people saying that, look, I don't, I believe in this, but I would never have done that. And that, that's wrong to take away from other people. And I also think it's wrong to take away what should be a point of transition for our country where we're willing to say, okay, democracy happened. We, we put all of our hours into, you know, counting ballots and voting, and our own city clerk worked many, many extra hours making sure that the, the polling stations were safe and orderly and organized. And it just is a complete discredit to all of that to say, well, I didn't get my way, so they can't be true. That's very unfortunate, and we all still have to live together here in Nashua, regardless of whatever's going on in Washington. So I would encourage people to just be mindful of the impact you have on others, especially in that area. And if you have beliefs and you have ideals and you want to, you know, push those forward, then run for office. We need more people. Feel free to lead, mobilize, and organize in positive ways. It speaks better to your message than the alternatives. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd like to say a few things. First, on the Brave New World Art Project, it's so impressive. The first day I saw it, I was like, what is that? And I slowed down, and then I got stopped at a light or intersection, and I was able to read them. And then every time I went by, I tried to read a new one, and I go by there almost every day. Very impressive. Great group of, group of kids that were able to put that together. The teachers were amazing. So I want to thank them and, and hope they continue doing that kind of honest and just great things. Also like to send my condolences to the family of Andre Pillaterre and Terry Romano. Terry Romano, I knew her quite well. She was very generous, a woman, very, very nice, very well loved. She will be missed. I guess that's it. Committee announcements? Alderman Dowd.
Yes, budget Monday, twenty five, January at seven, we're going to have three bonds and a contract that night. And we had to schedule them that way because of the timing involved. So there will be a a fair amount on the agenda, so just want to make sure that everybody knows that's when the meeting is.
Is that twenty twenty or twenty twenty one, Alderman Dowd?
I wish it was twenty twenty, but no, twenty twenty one.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee announcements?
Madam President.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. The Personnel Administrative Committee will be holding a special meeting on one twenty one, twenty one for discussion of two items. One is for the sewer fee, and the other one is the hiring of a new deputy tax collector treasurer. And that's it. Seven o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Alderman O'Brien. Seeing none. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion at the January twelfth, twenty twenty-one, I think I got it right, meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
The motion is to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Clea?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at nine twenty-one P M. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Good night. Good night, everybody.